Fifteen on March 25th. We're in the Tom Baker Room of the City County Building. We actually have two meetings tonight. One will be the Board of Health and the other will be the Board of City Commissioners. But first, we're going to call the meeting for the, we're going to have Chaplain Carr come forward with the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. A pleasure to see you as always. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, what a privilege it is to be in this room today and just to be able to open it up in prayer and to look to you first, asking you for wisdom and direction as we govern this city. Thank you for these Commissioners. Thank you for our city workers. Thank you for our first responders. God, may your blessing be upon them as they serve and protect this wonderful city. Now, God, I do ask that you would give us a spirit of unity today and a bond of peace as we look to you for direction in all that we do. Thank you for this great city and thank you for all that you do for us. In the name of our Savior, we pray. Amen. Join me by standing if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Now we'll call the meeting for the Board of Health to order first by calling roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Here.
Commissioner Zinker?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Cleary?
Here.
Mayor Schmitz?
Here. So Renee, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I will have a brief presentation, just updating you on a few things. This is the agenda for tonight. I will give you an update on our priorities with community health needs assessment and then ask for your approval of our community health improvement plan. And then I have a triage center update as well. So as you know, we've gone through our community health needs assessment process and developed our priorities. Every three years, we go to, we work together with the local hospitals to do a community health needs assessment survey. And after we've gone through that process, we worked with stakeholders to get our priorities in line. And these are the three that we are going to work on as a local public health department. Mental and behavioral health, healthy living and disease prevention, and then access to affordable health care will be the main focus areas which were derived from the health assessment and then also aligned with the work that we do. Just a brief overview of the plan that was included in the packet. Basically, it's a summary of the process of the community health needs assessment, the key findings that we were able to gather during the process, and it serves as a guide for us for future planning. Our priorities then will be used to shape our department's strategic plan, and that will inform and align with the City of Bismarck's strategic plan, and that is currently underway. So it's perfect timing for us to get through that and get the development of that. I will ask for your approval of the community health improvement plan. It is a consent agenda item, on the consent agenda. So as the commission, if you get adjourned and readjourn as the commission, that I would ask for your approval under that line item. Do you have any questions on the community health improvement plan? Okay.
Any questions, Commissioners? No? Okay. Go ahead.
Then I will move on to the community triage center. Just to give you an update on this project, our steering committee is continuing to meet to move the project forward. We did put forth a request for proposals for technical assistance, and actually, that was to be supported from funding from the North Dakota Department of Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Division. And the purpose of the RFP was for technical assistance to look at what a community triage facility could look like in our community, look at the model development, a governance structure, and involve particular stakeholders, look at a financial sustainability plan and budget for a project like this, and then provide us with an implementation roadmap. We did go through the interviewing and selection process, and I was going to come to you tonight to ask for your approval to move forward with a contract to award to health management associates. Literally before stepping foot in the room tonight, I got a phone call. And unfortunately, due to actions taken at the federal level regarding funding sources, we are, we've been informed that it may not be a secured funding source to move forward with the contract. And so I ask that you would potentially pull that item from the consent agenda when you convene because we would need to seek additional funding sources or see what the outcome of the federal decision making that happen today, how that will impact us. But I can't, I can't guarantee that this will happen. So that, with that...
Questions, Commissioner Risch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Renee, so it was approved, but now you're told that even though it was approved, we may not issue the money. Is that, do I understand it right?
That's correct, Commissioner Risch. I don't know if you've seen some of the federal, some of the news stories that happened today about the impacts of the federal funding. They've cut several programs relating to some of the work that we do at the local level. We received an email today from the Behavioral Health Division that some of the funding, they were notified, some of their funding is being frozen as of yesterday. So the work that was supposed to be able to go through their contract period, I believe, was through September, has now been put on hold or told, basically told that it's done as of yesterday, and there's 30 days that they have to reconcile the project. And so some of that funding could have been used to support this. So without that, we're kind of in limbo, I guess, unfortunately. And I literally just found that out before coming here. I called Jason like at 4:45 with the information.
I have that email if you want the information. So it just says, from the state level, obviously, as it trickles down, that it was late yesterday, COVID-related grant funding was terminated effective March 24th. Grant funding was originally set to expire March, or September 30th, 2025. Funding includes the MHBG, which is the Mental Health Block Grant Supplemental and Substance Use Prevention Treatment and Recovery Services and Supplemental Grants, and this falls under that for us. So we'll, yeah, pull it from consent when we, when we get there.
Any other questions for Renee? Do you have anything else for us tonight?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Then if there's nothing else for the Board of Health, we adjourn the Board of Health. And now we'll call to order the Board of City Commission. If we can call roll, please.
Commissioner Risch?
Here.
Commissioner Zinker?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Cleary?
Here.
Mayor Schmitz?
Here. First, we have two proclamations today. One is Wear Blue for Child Abuse Prevention Month. So whereas children are vital to our city's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets, and whereas awareness of child abuse and neglect in a community is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life in our community, therefore, be it resolved that I, Michael Schmitz, Mayor of the City of Bismarck, on behalf of this commission, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2025, is Wear Blue Day in the City of Bismarck and the official start of Child Abuse Prevention Month. I urge all citizens, elected officials, staff, volunteers, faith groups, business owners, and community partners, and friends of the City of Bismarck to participate in any and all efforts to raise the awareness for and support of children. Signed this day, the 25th of March, 2025. The other is Fair Housing Month proclamation. Whereas one of the greatest freedoms enjoyed by Americans is the freedom to live in a home of one's choice, therefore, be it resolved that I, Michael Schmitz, Mayor of the City of Bismarck, on behalf of this commission, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2025, is Fair Housing Month in the City of Bismarck, and urge all citizens to honor and abide by the letter and spirit of fair housing. Signed the 25th of March, 2025. Do you want? We can do, sure. I know Christie's here for sure, so we can grab photos. We are at public comment. Public comment period is restricted to items on the consent agenda or a regular agenda item that is not a public hearing. So anyone who would wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, the topic you're speaking to, and also sign in.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is John Frazi, resident of Bismarck. I have a few comments tonight on regular agenda item 5F, which is the BNSF construction and trail situation. First off, thank you to Commissioner Risch for broaching this topic during other business at the last meeting. I have two items to just keep in mind during construction. I would like to have a discussion on keeping the trail open as much as possible while maximizing safety during construction and then also ensuring the trail is restored to its original status after construction's complete. First thing is, every party in this conversation is focused on the same thing, which is safety, whether it's BNSF, the commission, or all citizens. We all prioritize safety before anything. We don't need to, you know, dive into that because there's no disagreements. As you can see right now, the weather is getting nice, temperatures are slowly rising, and all of us are getting anxious to get outside and exercise. The Riverfront Trail, in my opinion, is arguably the best amenity we have in Bismarck, and I think a lot of people feel the same way because it's a huge part of the community and it's a packed trail all the time. Most nights in the summer, there's all kinds of people walking on the trail, rollerblading, biking, running. Saturday mornings, the trail is packed as well. People fish along the trail, people have their senior pictures taken there, and all of our local high school and cross-country teams constantly use the trail as there's dozens of people using it all the time. We are already cut off from the trail throughout the winter, obviously, as it's often dark or covered with snow. And it's actually probably the top spot in town where people take their pets to get them exercise and never get between a person and their pet. There's not necessarily a ton of people speaking up about this issue because it's been happening for three to five years, this topic in general. Now, the whole bridge issue is mostly behind us because the new bridge is coming, but this issue is maybe side-related to the construction of the new bridge because we're talking about the trail. Just because there aren't people here doesn't mean they don't care. And again, as the summer gets rolling, there are a lot of people that are going to get out there, try to use the trail, and notice the closures. So hopefully, we can get ahead of some of this issue by having the conversations. Throughout the last three to five years, there were lots of groups, like Friends of the Rail Bridge, all kinds of other advocacy groups, going through these public comment processes and stuff like that. I'm not an advocate for any of those groups. I'm not representing anybody. I'm only here as a citizen. I wasn't part of any of those conversations. The U.S. Coast Guard issued their final environmental impact statement report on October 24th, 2022. Page 20 of that report lists their official commitments to us post-construction. From that report, on page 20, it said, "The Riverfront Trail will be restored to a condition that is equal or better to pre-construction after the project is completed." I would ask you guys to continue to hold them accountable down the road when that construction's completed. Again, there's not a lot of people speaking up about this now, but if you look at Appendix A of that report, there are 46 pages of public comment from individuals, Friends of the Rail Bridge, ND DOT, and the Bismarck Parks and Rec Department. Granted, many of those comments are related specifically to whether the bridge should be built in the first place, but there were all kinds of comments in there about things like the waterway being closed, the trail closure, and eventual restoration of the trail. Some of this, in my opinion, just looking through that report, is a little vague. I mean, unfortunately, construction is vague in general as far as timelines, so I do understand some of that. In that report, the Coast Guard did respond to each comment from every group. One of the common responses that the Coast Guard said when they responded to any comments about closures was this, direct quote, "Temporary closures of Riverfront Trail may occur during construction while work is completed in the immediate vicinity of the trail. Durations of temporary closures are anticipated to vary from hours to weeks depending on task. Post-construction Riverfront Trail will be restored to a condition that is equal or better to pre-construction." A representative from BNSF was here on August 13th and is here tonight as well, and he said it will be closed for a period of time, which is fine. I think everybody anticipates that the trail will have some closures throughout this massive project. I don't have any indications or accusations of any violations by BNSF with the City of Bismarck because, again, some of this is vague and it's hard to know in advance exactly when and what would need to be closed. The things I would ask from BNSF would be to continue to have a conversation with like the Park District on maybe getting some numbers on how many people this will impact, during the summer months especially. To the commission, please continue to actively represent the public to keep this trail open when it's safe and ensure the trail is restored to equal or better condition post-construction. Also, just BNF, work with our boards here, elected officials, to address citizens' concerns safely, number one. Keep the trail open while we can during, when it's safe, and then restore it when we're done. Please listen to public comments and be transparent. And again, Commissioners, the ask of you guys is to continue this dialogue with BNSF on this topic, represent us. And thank you again for Commissioner Risch to bring this, bringing this up last meeting. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Frazi?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Again, this is public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward. State your name, the topic you're speaking to, and also sign in, please.
My name is Vernon Peterson, and I'm here in support of the, the walking trail also. And he did a bang-up job explaining everything, but just to me, I think if Burlington Northern can construct a bridge, we can figure out a way that we can access this walking path. And that's about, that's, that's pretty much what I have to say. And if you just think about it, we should be able to find out a way to do this. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? A second call for public comment? A third and final call for public comment? Seeing or hearing anyone? Public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, your wishes?
I'm going to go ahead and pull E2, which is the Public Health Triage Center topic that Renee referenced, and then move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Item A in the regular agenda is public hearing on ordinance 6611, a zoning map amendment from RT Residential Zoning to the district, to the CA Commercial District for Lot 3, Block 1, and the Kilburn North First Edition replat. Go ahead, Daniel.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm standing in for Ben there, Community Development Director today. So DK Ventures LLC is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the RT Residential Zoning District to the CA Commercial Zoning District on Lot 3, Block 1, Kilburn North First Edition, I'm sorry, Kilburn North Edition First replat. As you can see on the screen here, this is located in north Bismarck, between North Washington Street and Normandy Street, along the south side of 43rd Avenue Northeast. The site is currently occupied with a medical office that is operated by the owner. So there really is no intention for any new development, actually, no change of use even with this site. However, it is the wish of the applicant to have the site aligned with the adjacent zoning, which is also in his ownership and shares a parking lot. So based on the findings that are contained in your staff report, staff does recommend approval of this zoning map amendment, and those are related to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. This area is in the neighborhood mixed-use portion of our future land use plan, so this would be supported just like the lot to the west, which has a similar zoning. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing on this request on February 26 of 2025, and they do also recommend approval of the requested zoning. I can attempt to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions of Daniel? Doesn't look like it. This is a public hearing on ordinance 6611. Anyone who wishes to speak to the topic, please come forward. A second call for public comment? A third and final call for public comment? Hearing and seeing, no public comment. Public comment period now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next, item B, consider request to hear the insufficiency of protests on the resolution of necessity for a street improvement district 588. Gabe?
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners. Load up my PDF here. SI 588 is our concrete pavement repair project, the, on Third Street for Plan for 2025. The protest period ended on 3/21, and we did not have any protest letters for this particular project. So our recommendation is to accept the insufficiency of protest for this project and to continue development.
Commissioners, any questions?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next, item C is consider request to receive bids and award contract for highway construction project 177. Your show, Gabe.
Mayor, Commissioners, Highway Construction Project 177 is our crack ceiling project that we'll have in our community. We had a project budget of $198,000 of sales tax money to fund this. A low bidder was Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation with a bid of $94,050. Our recommendation is to award to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation as stated.
Any questions?
Move to approve as presented.
I just got one question, Mr. Mayor. Gabe, it looks like it's considerably lower than the rest of the bids. Have we, has this company done work for the city in the past?
Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Risch, this company has done work in the past. Really, would, as you can see, one of the companies had pretty much a number really similar to what we thought it would cost. This type of work is pretty straightforward in nature, but is very much susceptible to their capacity to perform it. So thankfully, we had three contractors and two of which were hungry to do the work and gave us a price that reflected that.
So we have a first.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next, item D is consider request to receive bids and provide recommendations on award of contract for street lighting and traffic signal project SV 79. Go ahead, Gabe.
Mayor, Commissioners, this project is the signal replacement at the intersection of Front Avenue and South Washington Street. We included the bid summary in the packet. We had that ready to go for our, the agenda deadlines, and that was included in your packet. But our recommendation at the time was to wait for this decision on what the budget summary would look like. We did put additional dollars in this project funded through sales tax to accommodate some of the geometric changes we were contemplating at this intersection. So we wanted to make sure that we had that piece figured out, as well as then the project did come in over the CIP amount that the Public Works Service Ops, I guess the streetlight utility, had funded for this particular improvement. We do have cost savings on some previous projects that we've already awarded that we know are, you know, something in the range of $300,000 on the LED replacement project. So there's adequate budget in this year's budget when looked at those two projects combined. And so with the cost savings from the previous project, we feel comfortable awarding this one, even though it is above the CIP amount for this improvement. And with that, I'd take any questions that you would have.
Any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, Gabe, I'm just impressed how close they are, like $800 a peak part on a half a million dollar project.
It's sometimes remarkable how close those contractors can be on this, but our recommendation would be to award to Edling Electric to the tune of $563,807.50.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you.
Next item is consider request to receive a report relating to the future Fourth of July events and activities in Bismarck. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Generally, when I'm at the podium, I have a whole lot of information to share, and I'm glad to do so. Tonight, I'm here to kind of give you some information, but not all of it, and I apologize. I wanted to provide an update, and I'm going to look to Commissioner Cleary here for any fill-ins because she's been a part of this project as well. If you'll indulge me in just a, for just a little bit, how did we get here? We got here, and here where we are, we're talking about the Fourth of July. And we're talking about the Fourth of July in the City of Bismarck, the capital city of North Dakota. Last year, in May or June, I reached out to Mike Gardner with Bismarck Mandan Symphony Orchestra. Mike is the executive director, and the reason I reached out to Mike is because as part of our annual budgeting process, for as long as I've been a part of the budget committee, for as long as I can recall, the City of Bismarck has supported the fireworks display at the Capitol Grounds on the Fourth of July. And the way we have done that is through basically a grant that would go towards the Bismarck Mandan Symphony Orchestra. They were the primary organizers of the event. Those funds were used to pay for the fireworks display. And several years ago, Brulee County shared in that cost as well, but in the most recent past, that cost of the fireworks has solely been borne by the City of Bismarck. The symphony takes care of all the other planning, all the other events and activities. So when I reached out to Mr. Gardner and I said, "Mike, can we talk about fireworks in 2025? We're going through our budgeting for 2025. Will the amount be the same? Does the price change year to year?" It's my first time talking with him. In the past, it had been Administrator Hunky. And what Mike shared with me is maybe something that many of you have come to learn, but in 2024, it was the, it was the symphony's intentions that that would be their final year of hosting the event at the Capitol. Commissioner Risch, I see your expression, the cameras didn't catch it, but I did. That was, that was my expression as well. I, I was concerned. As a resident of Bismarck who annually takes advantage of the opportunities and the activities at the Fourth of July at the Capitol Grounds, I was upset to learn that the symphony was choosing to explore other options. And one of the things that Mike shared with me, and I can appreciate this, he said the symphony was questioning how the Fourth of July helped them achieve their mission. And their mission is to, you know, bring performing arts and symphony and live performances to the community. When you think about how the event at the Fourth, at the Capitol Grounds takes place early in the evening, everyone that's there is there to hear the music and to experience the, the performance that is there. As the night drifts on, as the skies get darker, and eventually, when it is dark and the fireworks go off, the mall lawn at the Capitol is much fuller than when it initially started. So I think it could be safe to say that some people may not be there necessarily for the symphony, some might be there for the fireworks, some might be there for both reasons, some might, you know, there's a variety of reasons that people choose to participate in that event. Bottom line is, I was concerned to hear that we may not have that opportunity going forward. Bottom line is, I was concerned to hear that we may not have that opportunity going forward. And so I reached out to some community partners. These are people that you all know. These are people that we have worked with in the past. People like Brendan Nagel from the Bismarck Mandan Chamber E D C, Sherry Grossman with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Kate Herzog with Downtowners, Parks and Recreation District, Mike Wald and Kevin Clipfel have both been a part of this discussion, John Bollinger with Bismarck Larks. The Larks do a lot of things in this community and, and do a lot of things very well in this community. And Commissioner Cleary was part of this conversation as well. Just make sure I didn't miss anybody. Along the way, Amanda Yellow with our staff joined the conversation as well. And where we are today, what, you may have seen the news release, there is a committee. We, we are calling ourselves a committee. We are actively looking at what can we do in two thousand and twenty-five to take that event that was scheduled to be, or has been historically held at the Capitol for thirty-some years? What can we do as a community to continue that tradition, but perhaps in another location, perhaps with different features, perhaps more amenities? What I can't tell you is, we have it all figured out, because we don't yet, but we are getting much, much closer. And it is my hope that within the next month, there will be a big announcement of all the things that have come together and all the partners in the community that are stepping forward to help recognize the significance of this event and to turn it into something new and different for the future. And so I'm not here to ask of anything. I'm not here to ask you to make a direction. I just wanted to provide an update on where we are and really just say that, you know, this, this conversation is happening. It's been happening for quite some time, and I'm very encouraged that there are a number of partners that are involved. And with a few fingers crossed, we're going to come back and have big smiles on our faces and talk about what's really going on, what, what we hope will be going on for the future. So Commissioner Cleary, did I leave anything out? Is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, I guess I don't know if I have anything to add specifically. The, the committee has talked a lot about, a committee that I forced Jason to invite me to, but, has talked a lot about how we keep it at the Capitol, how we help the symphony, because I think the symphony's struggle with it was, it, yeah, like, it falls in line with part of their mission, but it also is a very hard event for them to fundraise. The city of Bismarck covers the cost of essentially the fireworks, but there's a lot more cost that goes into it on their end. And so that's kind of where the conversation started. But then obviously, if you drive up State Street, there's a big new building on the Capitol Grounds, and that is usually where fireworks were let off. And so then it also led the committee to a lot of conversation about can we still shoot fireworks off at the Capitol Grounds? The people up at the Capitol Grounds were very accommodating with trying to make that work, where, how could we kind of fully flip or change this event to make it still work? And frankly, I feel like our committee has, had decided that based off of all of the different options that we could do, we wouldn't be able to have the same caliber of event by like moving the fireworks to a different spot. They, it, like when you look at the square footage that is needed for a firework of that size, that sort of stuff. So there's been a ton of conversation, is kind of my point. I think that that's going to be the reaction to this press release is going to be like, what? It's changing because myself included have been going to that since I was a toddler. So I understand that it's going to be kind of a bummer to see it change, but the hope is that it'll change for the better. So that's kind of what we're working on now, is how we can make it just as good, if not better. More things to do, more stuff going on, more community partners. So it's a work in progress, but it's been good.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, Jason, so the symphony is out. They're not going to do it this year?
No, I, sorry, Jason. The intention is that they're still included, it's just that they're getting more help from this committee so that it's not on their backs to fully plan. Because they were also running into the issue with, even if they were able to have, had the capacity to continue on with the event as is, they were going to have the same firework issue too. So I think that that's kind of where they originally came into the struggle as well. But they, they're, they're still fully included with the conversation and the committee, and it's still our intention as of right now that they play a musical part at whatever happens, so.
Any other questions for Jason? I just, it's good to get it out there so people know we got plans, because we'd hate to have the Fourth of July not celebrated and also not disrupt what Mandan has going on at the same time. So, thank you, Jason.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, moving to item F, consider request to receive an update from Burley to Northern Santa Fe. And Amy, or who's, go ahead.
I'm going to take it.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Amy Macbeth with B N S F. It occurred to me while I was sitting here that when Mike Herzog and I first started talking to the commission about this project, the only commissioner who was around at that time was Commissioner Zinker. So I, I think that's a good sign, because we've been here a lot over the years. I don't know what Commissioner Zinker thinks about that, but, so tonight is a continuation of our commitment when the project started and from before it started, that we were going to keep the public up to date. And I know there's some questions, particularly given that the impact is going to be felt more on the Bismarck side as the project evolves. So I'm very pleased to have Mike Herzog come back, and he's our, he's our guru on all things heavy bridge at B N S F Railway. So I'll let him give a update, and then we'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you for having me here. Mike Herzog, Director of Bridge Construction for the B N S F Railway. Ten of my presentation here this evening is to hit a couple of different areas. First, to give you an update of progress on construction of the bridge to date, and then we will get into what to look at in two thousand and twenty-five. And throughout the course of those topics, we'll hit on some of these other items that are related to construction and present more impact to the public going forward into two thousand and twenty-five. First slide we have up here represents work completed to date. It's a plan view of the new bridge. The sheeting in blue represents the construction that we've completed to date. Orientation here up is north, and as you've seen with traveling in the area, most of the work to date has been over on the Mandan side. So very little impact, I would say, has been seen on the Bismarck side. And to put a real-life picture to it, this is, the pier seven is in the lower left-hand corner of this slide, and that is our first river pier construction. And what this picture really gives a good visual to is what it takes to build these river piers. It's not a small bridge construction. I would say this rivals some construction you see on TV in modern marvels, because this is, this is big bridge construction. If you zoomed in on this picture, you could see that we have multiple concrete pump trucks at multiple stages, just leapfrogging concrete to get it out to the cofferdam out in the river, to get it down inside that cofferdam and start bringing it up out of the river, which is what you see today, that portion of Pier Seven sticking above the waterline. And then in the background of this picture, what I'd like to point out is the west dock wall that comes out of the bank on the Mandan side. When I say dock wall, that's the sheet piling that comes out and gives us an extended footprint out into the river to facilitate marine access for construction of these river piers. And just a couple nuggets of trivia, when you think about constructing one of these river piers, we're talking about placing almost a mile of piling under one of these river piers, two hundred and fifty thousand pounds of rebar going into it, and forty-four hundred cubic yards of concrete going into it. So again, just to put an exclamation point on it, big bridge construction, there's a lot going on here.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. Mike, I noticed the pier on the Mandan side there appears to be somewhat underneath the existing bridge. How are you going to make that work when you do the cutover?
So that's been a topic that was discussed during the eight years of project development. This is a conscious effort by B N S F to minimize our impact on the public and the environment. The river piers themselves are being constructed to accommodate a second track in the future. That second track is the one that conflicts with the existing bridge. Does that make sense? And the, so the track we will in service is, will be offset to the north.
Oh, so, so the pier that I see underneath the, somewhat underneath the old bridge is not going to be used for the new bridge? That's just going to be in reserve for double track?
Are you looking at the picture that's on the screen right now?
Right, right. The bright white pier, the new one there.
Okay. Where it extends under the bridge?
Yeah.
That is the expansion footprint for a future track, should we ever need it. The new track will set on the northern portion of that pier. That make, answer your question? Okay. So to get to this point, this, this was our first year of working in the river, our first river pier. It adds levels of difficulty, not only constructing the cofferdam, the excavation, all those operations to get to the point where we are today. One item you may recall is, in August, we shifted to around-the-clock operations on constructing this pier. And that was because in late July, we recognized, we got a lot of work to do, December's coming fast, and we have to have the cofferdams out of the river before ice flow. That is a requirement of our permit because of the potential to cause problems with ice dams. So that was one step we didn't plan on going into two thousand and twenty-four construction is recognizing that in July and shifting gears to around-the-clock operations to successfully get that cofferdam out before ice flow. Okay, moving on, talking about what we anticipate to get complete here in two thousand and twenty-five. Again, in this picture, the blue represents what we expect to have completed by the end of this year. You'll notice on the Mandan side, it's starting to look a lot more like a bridge. We got through Pier Seven complete. We have spans up in the air. We're working to place the deck on it. And the real focus, the real effort, the, the blood, sweat and tear is going to go into constructing Piers Five and Six, the two other river piers we have that are on the Bismarck side. That, yes, thank you for asking that question to clarify. The, the left side of this picture is the Mandan side, up is north. So during the course of this year, Piers Five and Six will be the focus of our effort. To answer one of the questions that's been asked of us, far as passageway for river traffic, we will have a dedicated route for river traffic going through the, the construction side area. It will resemble this. On the left of the orange area is that new Pier Seven that, if you've been out there, you've seen it sticking above the water. And to the right of it is the new Pier Six that we'll be working on here in twenty-five. So there'll be a cofferdam, barges staged upstream, downstream, to, to work on that throughout the year. And then upstream, downstream, we'll have navigation buoys to help direct marine traffic to where we want them to travel as they traverse through the river, or traverse through the Okay, continuing on, access for construction via B N S F rightaway on the east side, the, on the slide you see, right side you see River Road. Immediately to the west of River Road is the, shows the center line of New Pier Four. Traversing over probably another thirty feet is the trail. And then immediately off the trail, the terrain slopes down to the, towards the river. This picture shows the wavy lines is the east dock wall, similar to what we had on the west side. It's to help facilitate access to construct New Pier Five that you see there on the left side of the screen. New Pier Five, pretty much a mirror image of what it took to build Pier Seven, far as the, the quantity of rebar, quantity of piling, concrete. And then what's not shown on this slide would be another two hundred foot to the west is New Pier Six. So the footprint on the east side on the B N S F rightaway between River Road and our dock wall, that's really being utilized to facilitate access to construct Pier Four and to facilitate construction of Pier Five and Six, leapfrogging materials out there to get it constructed.
Commissioner Rich.
Mayor, Mike, Pier Four, how far away from River Road will Pier Four be? Looks pretty close here, right?
It is fairly close. I would say it's a little bit further than what you see existing, I don't know if I'd say further, probably similar to what we see of existing Pier Six on the right side of River Road, or the east side of River Road. And I guess what you don't see in this picture, I have it up here, but to construct Pier Four, the foundation of it is similar to the river piers, a little bit smaller. It is bigger on the bottom. You have, I believe it's a twenty by twenty-five foot square, so you're talking about excavating, excuse me, excavating down to the elevation to drive pile, place concrete. So it's not just an isolated area of constructing a small pier. This is also a pier that takes a decent footprint to be able to construct it. And this last picture here just shows a couple pictures of recent activities there on the B N S F rightaway between River Road and the, the east shoreline of the river. Couple items to hit on from the public comment section with regards to trail restoration, B N S F's fully committed. We have, we are going to restore the trail to as-is or better condition when we are done. So that, that's not a question for us. We understand that's an obligation, and we fully intend to live up to it. In addition to, as we approach the end of the project, we have intentions of working with, I believe it's the Park District, whoever the owner of the trail is, to get this papered up right for crossing the B N S F rightaway. So I's are dotted and T's are crossed, and we have the appropriate agreements in place.
Commissioner Rich.
Oh, we, we don't have an easement now. It's, we've been there, we've got rights to go across it now. Now, you've cut down all our trees. What are your plans to, all these mature trees, what are your plans to restore our trees?
Well, along the sides of the new bridge, I would say we're not going to plant trees because we do utilize cameras on both ends of the bridge for security reasons to monitor traffic on the river.
You just cut them all down and that's it, huh?
Not in that location where it obscures our ability to utilize our cameras for the sake of security of the bridge.
Mike, thanks for all the information. Can you give us maybe a more specific update on the trail that is currently blocked off, understanding for safety purposes, but that's primarily what I'm getting contacted about right now from our constituents? Obviously, there were some of them here today. Mr. Fraze even said that he knows other people are talking about it. He's not wrong. I'm, I, I'm hearing from them. It's a big concern, I think, in the summer that, it, I understand why it's blocked off for safety, but I also understand that the people that are using it constantly are going to try to use it and go around, and if that leads them to River Road, we have a whole other problem with safety. So I just, can you give us like a timeline on how long that's closed, understanding that you're operating close to it right now, but?
Yes.
Any, any kind of updates specifically on the trail use?
Thank you for that reminder. I didn't, I had intended to talk about that and slipped out there. So when I was here last year, we did talk about concepts, looking at rerouting trail traffic into the southbound lanes and using traffic signals to restrict vehicular traffic to one lane on the northbound lanes. And as we evaluated that further, B N S F made the conscious decision that, well, let me back up. We talked about that as a concept. We also talked about what opportunities we may have to We also talked about what opportunities we may have to minimize the duration of closure because if you all remember, last year we were talking about needing to close the trail in September-ish of last year. Working with our contractor, we were able to put that off until this March. And, with regards to the, the concept we talked about for traffic control, we did evaluate that, thinking about the operations that would take, be taking place, the ingress and egress of construction traffic, and made the decision that the commingling of pedestrian traffic and construction traffic just was not going to be a good idea. And, for the sake of, uh, safety, we needed to close the trail. Now, with regards to the duration, uh, we closed it here, I want to say sometime in March, and while we have committed to looking at the trail in the winter time, I get it, it's the winter, it's not popular time to walk, but cross-country scan, I don't know, there, there's some use, I would say. We'll evaluate it to see if we can open it up during the winter time. During construction, we do intend to be keeping it closed during the construction time of the year through mid-27.
Commissioner Risch.
Well, you appeared before us last August, and my remembrance was that if you're going to keep the River Road open as much as possible and the trail open, and of course, the river access for boaters to go through there. And, I, I just, for the life of me, can't understand how you can keep the river open, you can keep the, uh, River Road open, and this little narrow trail, you can't keep open. It just doesn't make sense to me. Um, and, yeah, and we, we fully understand. I mean, there's nobody on this commission that doesn't understand that during construction there'll be times where you're going to have to close everything down and move some equipment across and back and forth, but, um, this idea, and I read in this paper, this three weeks ago in the Bismarck Tribune where Amy McBest said, "The trail will be closed for the duration of the project." That wasn't the message we got in, in August.
In August, as I just said, we committed to looking at the concept using traffic control, pushing pedestrians out into the road, using signage and barrier to route them that way, which you would still have a conflict with construction traffic coming in and out of the, the access, or in and out of our access area. So, you have that conflict there. And, at the same time, we talked about evaluating what we could do to minimize that duration. As I said, we did not close it down last fall. We were able to push that to this spring.
Well, I hope not. You didn't do anything last fall. You closed this thing down on March first, and in the first twelve days, you didn't do anything. Then you went over there and cut down all the trees. So, you had it cut, it's closed down for at least ten days, one of which was a weekend at sixty-degree weather. That trail was closed, and nothing was happening.
And I will say, that's not terribly uncommon. When you're managing resources, trying to get a project going, yes, there are going to be days you don't see work taking place out there, just like on a highway DOT project. Any construction project, you have op, you have times when resources aren't aligned, your efforts are focused elsewhere. If I could get the picture back up on the screen. So, you, we talk about the need for that area. That is a very small footprint on the east side, between the River Road and where the terrain slopes off to the river. You can see in this picture how much of that area we're using on the west side just to construct one river pier. We're talking about constructing two river piers, and it's going to take much more. This one, we had to shift gears and go to around-the-clock work in August, just to be out of the water by December. This year, I'll go ahead and tell you now, we're looking at going, having to go to around-the-clock operations probably right out of the gate to ensure we don't put ourselves in a, paint ourselves in a corner and not able to get those cofferdams out. So, here, early April, we're going to start going around the clock with constructing Piers Five and Six, and part of it will involve staging of material, staging of equipment. If you look at the picture and see all the, the resources on land, and with a very small footprint we have over there, which is a small fraction of what we have here. So, that is very valuable real estate with regards to construction. And, I will acknowledge freely, it's a really cool trail. When I'm in town, I go out there running. I really enjoy it. We are closing a four-hundred-foot stretch of this for the sake of safety. And, I would tell anybody that, I would say, you need to do, the rest of the trail is still open. There is a four-hundred-foot stretch. Need to change plans for the time that the trail's closed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up. One of my concerns is safety as well. And I've already got a report of somebody going around the barrier and walking down the River Road and crossing back over again. And that's what I'm afraid is going to take place. Uh, what I think the solution is, for you to build something over the top of the trail to protect people that are three feet wide, four feet wide, right next to the barriers, and put a protective covering over it when, when construction is taking place. Ames Construction, one of the finest construction, biggest construction companies in the world, they can figure that out. All you've got to do is decree it.
If we can go back to this picture again, please. I agree, Ames is a big contractor. They're used to big bridge construction. I would point at this, you, this picture, you have deliveries, you have equipment, you have workers coming in and out. You're talking about putting and awning up, probably similar to what you would see for vertical construction around buildings.
Sure.
We're not talking vertical construction. We're talking about excavating down to construct Pier Four. We're talking about an access route to come off River Road, to facilitate marine access, transferring from land to barge, to be able to construct those two. So, you have an intersection of the trail and this construction traffic, and that's not a good recipe right there, far as trying to control pedestrian traffic when you are trying to come and go.
Well, you're going to allow it on, traffic on the highway, on, on River Road?
No, because we're not staging on River Road. We are turning off River Road onto our property where we will be storing equipment, materials, and staging them. It's a public road, and we're, as I said, we're coming off River Road utilizing that footprint within our right-of-way, that four-hundred-foot stretch, to facilitate construction.
So, are your intentions now to keep it closed from now till when? Till the completion of the project, or possibly open it in the winter time is all?
Yes.
Is that, is that what I hear?
As I said to Commissioner Clary, our intentions are, if we can open it up during the winter time, we will. Otherwise, during the construction's time of the year, we will intend to keep it closed through completion of the project, which right now is slated for mid-2027.
Wow.
Commissioner Clary.
Mayor, Commissioners, Mike, um, just, uh, I understand why the decision was made, um, but when you're making this conscious decision to close instead of move that trail like you were talking about, um, were, was city engineering, was Parks and Rec, were they engaged in that conversation, or was this just a BS, BNSF decision because it was the best option for the project? I guess I just want to know if that conversation happened. Obviously, we have traffic engineers that could have participated in, does it make sense to move the pedestrians into, next to River Road? Parks and Rec, it facilitates that area, so I'm just curious if that conversation happened, or if it was just a railroad decision?
It was not just a railroad decision. Yes, we did work with Bismarck Engineering Team and Parks and Rec to talk through what we're looking at, discuss concepts, and ultimately come what the railroad was thinking about doing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Conley.
I grew up in a railroad community, and in the town, it was the railroad does what the railroad does. And, that kind of feels what it is here, is last year we were told something, now it's changed. And, it would have been better off that you didn't say it last fall. It just doesn't pass.
Well?
For me. Oh. Um, and that's fine. I, I get the safety, just like everybody says. But it'd just been better off to say, "It's going to be done for two years. We can't do it. Get the project done and move on."
Do you want to take it?
First of all, I, Commissioners, Mayor, um, I understand that some people have that legacy view of the railroad, but we've worked really hard to be transparent and to share communication. So, um, I think if you go back and look at some of the statements that we've made of the project website that we've promoted, we've been talking for quite some time, um, since last fall, that the trail would have to be closed for a period of time. Um, if the railroad does what the railroad does, we would close down the trail and we would not let the trail reopen. Um, it, that section of trail is on railroad property, and we're committed to restoring that trail. There are plaques there that we'll work with the Park District to, um, put back in place because people have, you know, trees or things that they had commemorated by a plaque. We're, we'll work with them. There's a irrigation system. There's a lot of, a lot of things that we've been working with to accommodate on our property. Um, unfortunately, for a period of time, a section of that trail will be closed for safety. We have every intention of making sure that there's an agreement in place moving forward. So, we know where the irrigation system is, so, um, there's, uh, clear guidelines about repairing the trail, things like that. We're committed to working with the community on that, um, and work really hard to try to minimize the overall impact. I get it, that's not the answer that anybody wants, that it has to be closed at all, but from a safety perspective, the last thing that we want is somebody commingling, um, in the midst of very heavy construction as we saw from those, from those photos.
Commissioner Risch.
I just want to make one comment. We've had that trail there for many years, and under North Dakota state law, there's something called a prescriptive easement. We have a right to that. I don't even believe BNSF owns the land. The, certainly the state owns the riverbed, and historical documents say that the state owns actually to the historical high-water mark. So, I don't even agree with you that you own the land where the trail is today. And even if you did, all we have to do is go to court and get a prescriptive easement because we've been on it for more than twenty years. You're not going to close that trail permanently, and that kind of threat doesn't wash.
Commissioner Risch and Mayor and other Commissioners, it was not, let me be very, very clear, there was no threat made to close the trail in the future. I was referring to the comment that the railroad does what the railroad does. So, be very, very clear, there was no threat from BNSF Railway to close the trail moving forward. You cannot divest the railroad from our corridor, so the claims that, that we somehow, you could take the property is just, is not, is not accurate either. So, we can talk about that offline if you want, but the STB has ruled that you cannot adversely possess or divest of, divest us of our railroad corridor. Regardless of that, what we want to do is make sure that the community has access to the trail for the long term and that it's put back to, to, you know, where it was before or in better condition. So, we're absolutely committed to doing that.
I, I mentioned a prescriptive easement. That means access. That means the ability to go across. That's what that about, not taking about, taking any land.
I'm not a real estate lawyer, so I, I, I can't get into the back and forth with that. I just wanted to be clear that it is part of our railroad corridor, and we understand that it's a very popular trail, and we want to make sure that it's there for the rest of the community to use. The other, um, if I could, Mayor?
Sure.
Um, just to reiterate, one of the other things to give people a heads-up about that Mike mentioned is the around-the-clock work, and this falls into the category of things that we've tried to, um, forewarn or, uh, get out there that, that will happen, and we'll continue to advise as that's about to start. But that round-the-clock work, um, unfortunately, if, if we didn't have to do it, we, we wouldn't. We did it on, um, last fall, as Mike mentioned, but we'll do our part to try to continue to raise awareness about when that's about to start, likely early April, um, so that the public is aware. The other part that we work with our contractor on is to try to do, um, as much of the quiet work as, if you will, overnight in that overnight shift, to the extent that they can do that. There certainly will be, because of sequencing, some pile driving and things like that, but, um, we do work, uh, hard with them to try to accommodate that as much as possible.
Are there other questions? All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, Item G is a legislative report. Jason.
Mayor and Commissioners, uh, I'll try and keep this brief and maybe just stick to some of the bigger bills that we've been discussing and tracking along the way. Uh, first one right on the top of your list, uh, House Bill 1020. Again, this is the bill that has the, uh, budget for Water Resources District. This is also the bill that has noted some funding for the South Bismarck Flood Control Project. Uh, we're heading into committee work, uh, Senate Appropriations, Education, and Environment Division Committee work. Uh, just checked in with Gabe a little before, and, uh, communications are still going very well with our local state leaders, and we've switched conversations to the Senate side, obviously, since this has jumped over from the House to the Senate. Gabe sent a series of emails to local senators encouraging their support on this particular bill and offering, uh, to answer any questions or provide any additional information that they were looking for. Uh, so we're continuing to keep an eye on House Bill 1020. On page two, the, the big one that we've spent a fair bit of time talking about, House Bill 1176. Um, since the last time this group met, um, this particular bill has seen a little bit of traction. Um, full committee hearing on St. Patrick's Day, March 17th. Uh, the results of that were a, uh, to refer to Senate Appropriations Committee, we, yesterday there was committee work scheduled. Uh, however, it was canceled. It was my understanding, uh, that the chairman of the particular committee was, uh, out sick that day, so, uh, no immediate action on 1176, but we will continue to keep an eye on this one every day as work goes forward. Um, moving through House Bill 1389, we talked about this one last time. This is the bill that would have addressed the street utility fee. As you may remember, last session, the street utility fee, uh, got a little quagmired with some language that, uh, didn't work for parks and schools to, uh, pay for special assessments or to, uh, instead of paying special assessments, paid to the street utility fee. It was our hope that, uh, there was a slight amendment recommended for 1389. Uh, when it went through the House Committee, it had a number of amendments added to it by one of the committee members. As it crossed over to Senate Finance, um, I ended up attending the hearing, not in, not intention of testifying, but did offer a bunch of information at the end, um, to help clarify some things. As a result of that, as a result of the amendments that were added in the House, uh, the recommendation came back this week, five to one, do not pass. Um, as amended, uh, the bill actually would have not necessarily worked for the City of Bismarck as well. There were a number of amendments that would have caused this, uh, process to enable a protest period by citizens. It would have, um, put a cap on the, uh, commercial collection over residential, at two times over residential, and it just had some really unworkable things. And, in, in the end, it was our recommendation, as well as the North Dakota League of Cities, to essentially kill the bill, uh, because it just had too many, uh, too many restrictive things on it in its current format. Um, so despite all of our efforts there, uh, we might have to take a pause and come back one more time and, and try it where it is. I should mention, because of legislation two sessions ago, we are, we as the city or any municipality could currently enact a street utility fee. However, the problem would be that schools and parks do not have a means to pay for that particular mechanism. That's all the amendment was meant to do this year was to adjust so schools and parks could pay through the street utility fee. Uh, as I mentioned, there were a number of other things added on in the House Committee that just made the bill unworkable. Uh, next one moving forward, House Bill 1474. This was a significant reform to the property tax system by replacing the traditional ad valorem property tax with a new square footage scenario that was defeated by the Senate forty, uh, I'm sorry, five yays to forty-two nays. So, that one is no longer in contention, uh, for one of the property tax reform and relief bills. Uh, House Bill 1575, uh, would be the next one. That is, uh, significant changes to the, uh, tax and fund management systems, creates legacy earnings, um, would allow for a full exemption from forty thousand to fifty thousand. Uh, that was introduced- earnings, would allow for a full exemption from $40,000 to $50,000. That was introduced and passed the House. It was introduced first reading. It's, as of March 11th, there was a committee hearing, and it is waiting for more committee work. That's the only other contender for the property tax reform and reduction bills. And then, I think on the last page, the very back page, the only other one that I had noted in my notes that to call out is Senate Bill 2307. This is the one we had talked about two commission meetings ago. I believe this was the bill that addresses obscenity in libraries. Attended this hearing, was not able to testify. The, the amount of testimony, the number of attendees in the room simply needed to be limited. The chairman of the committee allowed for equal times for both the supporting and the oppositional testimony. And despite all of the time allowed, there was still not enough time for everyone to share their thoughts. Just a little note on this one, the, if I remember right, the amount of testimony submitted on this bill, the oppositional testimony outweighed supportive testimony six to one. However, the committee did recommend a due-pass recommendation on a 12 to one recommendation. And as I looked this morning, it was referred to the House Appropriations Committee because there was a request for a fiscal note through the North Dakota University system, because this could cause a change to how the Oden system operates. And Oden is the, the cataloging system and research system through the North Dakota University system. So that particular bill, despite the overwhelming opposition, did see the light of day and has been referred to the House Appropriations Committee. If you have any other questions on bills in your worksheets, I'd be happy to try and address those. If you have any other just general legislative topics, happy to try and answer them.
Mr. Mayor, Jason, I was reading my trusted Bismarck Tribune this morning, and there's a sentencing bill that the head of corrections is very much opposed to. And Colby Brown is the guy's name, and he gave a presentation at the League of Cities meetings last week that I sat in on. And he gave great detail on, you know, 97% of the people you throw into jail are going to eventually get out. So we have to do things that when they do get out, they become productive citizens as much as possible. But anyway, it's a contentious bill. The corrections are very much opposed to the bill. And he makes the point that if it in fact passes, we're going to have dramatic increase in cost as far as incarcerating people. So I understand that our fees for our inmates at our joint jail is going from $75 a day to $100 a day starting next year. That's already a big increase. And there's the potential for more costs to the city if this thing passes. Has the League of Cities even looked at it, or, or, I, I should have talked to you beforehand, but I didn't get a chance to, but.
Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Risch, do you have the bill number on that one specifically?
Excuse me. Senate Bill 2128. It's the front page of the Tribune today. It's a very good article, and it explains the cost, potential costs associated with it. And what Mr. Brown says, it will be harmful effect on trying to get people better suited to entering the community once they're released from their incarceration. So I don't.
Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Risch, to answer your question, I'll, I'll admit, a lot of the law enforcement bills I have stayed away from, primarily because there are so many other agencies that are representing law enforcement. But if you'd like to know where the League's position on that is, I could certainly check and get back to you. Okay.
Other comments? Commissioner Clary?
One quick one, Jason. The one that's on here for House Bill 1382, just a note on that, because Steve and I have talked about it. It's the one that will affect the transportation funding that we're getting from the state. It's a little confusing because it, in the wording, it lists that like cities can use the funding for road infrastructure, but townships can use it for maintenance. And so I think if, if we're able, I know Steve has already tried to reach them to get some clarification on how that's going to spell out for us, because that'll change how it gets used, obviously, when we're budgeting. So.
Duly noted.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Other business?
Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in line here, I apologize. Usually, other business is reserved for the Commissioners, but I would like to maybe just talk a little bit about, each of you received a request for availability on April 29th. Okay? And you all confirmed, we've got the date locked in, we're going to be here, 5:15. What is significant about that day? That is one day beyond our normal second commission meeting in April. This group will meet April 8th and April 22nd in this room, 5:15 as always. What you will hear at the meeting on the 22nd will be some pretty dynamic information. And it's going to be coming from the consultant that was hired to do the operations and management study for the Bismarck Event Center. That's Jones, Lang, and LaSalle, or JLL. You'll also be getting a presentation from Jeff Hubel and his team on the capital improvements projects that have been, that he has been evaluating and building a CIP list for us over the next three to five to maybe eight years. Those two reports are going to have a lot of information in them. And what I don't expect this commission to do is to make a snap decision that evening. And so the reason we asked for your availability the week later is to have a workshop, a working session, where all five of you are at this table and discussing the reports that you heard the week prior, digging into all the details. So we don't, I don't want it compressed into a regular meeting with all the other topics that we'll have. I want to give you the time necessary to really get into all of this stuff, because I believe there are some very important decisions that need to be made from these reports. And to have a working discussion with all of you at the table with all that information in hand, I think will help direct staff a little better. It'll help you all understand what you each took away from those reports. And I think it will demonstrate our continued commitment to the advancement of the Bismarck Event Center as we continue to try and make it a, a better department for the City of Bismarck. So if I just wanted to offer that in case there was any confusion, I know local media's had some questions about it as well. There's a lot of attention on the event center and, and where we go from here. And I just wanted to bring that up for a little bit of discussion. I hope that's okay.
No. And it was my request that we actually consider having the extra meeting, because it's, I think there's a lot of topics. And we just need to have time. You know, it would be difficult to maybe get it in, in a normal meeting. So Commissioner Conley, you had a comment.
Well, like enlightened to it last meeting, it's official, May 8th, we will be partnering with the Human Relations Committee on a community conversation. I'd mentioned last time that they've always been held in the library in the past, but they're booked that night. And this room is not booked that night, so that will be occurring here on May 8th. And that's to discuss the dynamics of what would benefit Bismarck the most as, by way of public transportation. So.
Commissioner Risch.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to announce, and I noticed on the city website, we've got a new survey about chickens, like what came first, a chicken or the egg, or whatever the questions are. So if anybody wants to fill that out, people out there in TV land, you might want to go to the website and try the survey out.
Is there anything else? Commissioner Conley?
Well, since Commissioner Risch mentioned a survey, I know the MPO has some surveys out as well. And that's Metropolitan Planning Organization, mostly road projects, if people are so inclined.
Okay. And the only other thing I will mention is it's Mayor's Per Breakfast on May 20th. Please come out and support the Chaplaincy Program, who provide a great amount of support to our law enforcement and fire department personnel and all their first responders. This is the way they were able to raise money for that. So thank you all, and have a good night. We're adjourned.